What are you talking about?
We're going to, um, oh, uh, we're going into our planning board meeting for March 4th, 2024 at 6:30. We have no scheduled public hearings or open public meetings tonight. So we'll go into our regular meeting call to order.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Here.
Sal Chaconi.
Yeah.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Tom Carrigan, excuse. Jason Parre.
Here.
Dean Baier, excuse. Carol Vittorioso.
Here. Um, minutes of previous meeting from January 8th, 2024.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made second to approve the minutes from January 20, January 8th, 2024.
You're good.
Mr. Chaconi made it.
Okay. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Well, we'll call.
We'll call vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Tom Carrigan, excuse. Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Baier, excuse. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes. Um, 3.0 plans submitted, 3.1 site plan application for 544 North, Main Street, map 205 parcel one, Jimmy John's Restaurant. We have to schedule this for a...
This is just an existing building. They're going to convert it to a restaurant. It's going to have a drive-through and related parking.
So our next meeting is what?
March 18th.
And do we have something already for the 18th?
Nope.
So I move that we schedule this for March 18th at 6:30.
We got time, right? Second.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't need to advertise.
We don't need to advertise.
Public information?
Public information meeting, yes.
So it's a public information on our public square.
Yes.
Okay. Good.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to schedule this for March 18th at 6:30. Although, uh, roll call vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Tom Carrigan, excuse. Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Baier, excuse. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes. Um, 4.1, 4.1, the Woods at Massapod deviation of approved subdivision, 58 Dobson Circle, board to vote on decision of, I think that's applicant. So, um, the issue in this matter was, um, uh, the applicant of 58 Dobson Road, the developer, that was Mr. LaScotti, was looking to release a lot that was reserved as a pass-through or a potential way. We approved the release of that lot. We just need to amend the subdivision approval to authorize Elizabeth to submit an amended subdivision approval to, um, to eliminate the condition of, um, recording a new definitive plan of my lot.
A new Mylar, yeah.
Because there's nothing, we didn't make that as a condition and I understand Elizabeth because it's a, you know, she submits the same.
Yep.
Approval on subdivisions. So he's closing on that property and there was a...
So the motion is to allow Elizabeth to substitute a new Mylar for the previous?
That's, that's my understanding of what it means.
That's adjusted.
To amend the notice of subdivision approval to not require Mylar.
We already approved the law.
A new Mylar.
Oh, fine. So the motion is to say we don't require a new Mylar?
Yes.
Okay. I'll take that motion.
John has something.
John?
No, I'm just saying, the Mylar exists.
Right.
Yeah.
The only change was the note on the drawing itself.
Yeah.
So your motion is second.
So it was the same note on the Mylar? No. It was in the plans?
Yeah. So this is, you just add it to the Mylar.
So they could add it with the already pre-existing signatures or pre-existing items? Just add it to the Mylar that we have?
We're not changing the Mylar.
We're not changing the Mylar.
We're changing the note sub-decision.
The approval is, is recorded and it references the Mylar that exists. There's no change in the Mylar. The, the references within Elizabeth's subdivision approval, that lot is released. Okay? So I have a motion and a second to, um, amend, I guess, to amend the, that, amend the condition that they not be required to record a subsequent Mylar. Okay, motion made in second. Uh, roll call vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yeah.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Tom Carrigan, excuse. Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Baier, excuse. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes. And just for the, uh, just for the record, we have, um, I think is, uh, from KP Law had no issues with that.
Oh, yes.
And it's just really to clean up the title for, um, the sale of the property. Okay. Excellent. Um, no new business communications. City Council petition 2524 to amend the Leominster zoning ordinance by inserting a new section regarding short-term rental units. Planning Board to make recommendation to City Council. No planning board, public hearing or open public meeting is required per the city solicitor and this communication discussion was continued from our February 5th, 2024 public, uh, planning board meeting. So, um, that, that last meeting was out of courtesy. We invited, um, the city councilor to better explain what the objective was. So we continue today for further discussion and recommendation. Does anyone have any comments?
Yeah, I have some comments. Um, I did my diligence and followed up with the city of Quincy because I'm good friends with one of their, well, their former city council president who's still on the city council. They did enact, uh, the same regulation back in, I want to say 21? Maybe 2021, no later than 2022. Um, happened in the fall. They were having a lot of problems in their residence A along the waterfront and they were having a lot of B and Bs and a lot of issues relative to what we heard. And he said it was, it was taken to court. Wasn't spot zoning because it was only residence A. There was residence A only. Um, because a lot of the other neighborhoods kind of allowed it in some of their ordinances anyway. Now, I don't know what the mechanism is, but I don't believe there's a special permit in residence A. He, we discussed it for quite a while. It even had been taken to court by some of the people that were affected. And in Dedham Court, uh, there were decisions made that they didn't violate, uh, spot zoning and they could enforce this and actually do it in residence A. Um, I tried to find their table of uses and I had a nightmare looking for them and trying to get, you know, I had a nightmare. So he suggested that, uh, because I didn't see anything on the table of uses, but I couldn't really find the right table of uses that we would look at for ourselves. So that's something, if you can help me with it, we'll try to find that. But he said Rob Conlon is their, their, uh, director of inspectional services for, you know, just like Peter is for us. They said he's a very knowledgeable guy around this whole process because he's the one that helped design it and what they have is enforceable. And I haven't talked to Conlon yet. I've been waiting to talk to Conlon, but I think it would be a better call for our building inspector to call Conlon to see how they implemented and did this. With, you know, some other people viewing it at the same time. So, I mean, I don't know if that helps, but I know it, it exists and I know it's standard, stood the court case and I know that they did it residence A only. Because, you know, I had concerns about residence A only. Does that create any issues? And, you know, could have created a spot zoning issue too. Um, but it didn't. And that's the way the courts viewed it. And they're still, it's still in implementation today and it was very successful in them controlling certain pieces where they were having a lot of outside problems. So that's what I got.
So you, so, so what was explained to you that residence A, the wording in, in their...
It's very, the wording is very, yeah, it's residence A only.
Because, because of a specific location in Quincy that's on the waterfront? They were trying to avoid?
But it's all of residence A. It's all of residence A, not just that specific part of residence A. All of residence A. That's where their problems were developing. So they had an area that was getting really, you know, they were having a lot of issues there. So, um, and it sounded similar to the parties and the parking and everything else that we heard here. Even some of the uses of the short-term rentals that they were doing through B and B were kind of, uh, kind of interesting. I'm not going to go into it here, but from what he told me, they were kind of, you know, kind of like interesting businesses that were going in and out of you. And all in, there was some nasty stuff going on. So whether it was drug-related, whether it was, you know, money laundering, whatever it was, they were having some major issues. And that's what started their move toward doing it. So in section six, dot, I believe, 12, dot one and 12, dot two in their, in their, uh, in their ordinance. So, very, you know, it isn't, uh, it isn't an overly, uh, long detailed list of stuff, you know? And at the end of it, it refers at a table of uses and try to find that on their website. I couldn't find it. So, you know, you can find the tables of dimension and in the table of uses that, that I, I saw, you know, residence A, it didn't have a subheading up top where, you know, we have all our listings of what's allowed, what's not allowed. So I just think we've got to find that document and see if there were. I couldn't find anything about a special permit application process for it either. So, uh, maybe a little help in the, in the things and maybe a conversation with Conlon or maybe our, uh, building inspector, or inspector of services, whatever you want to call him, the title. Maybe he should talk to Conlon. Maybe, uh, because they're open to that. They're open to talking. But maybe we get the information out to everybody so that it isn't just clear. I'll give you the counselor's name if you want to talk to the counselor as well.
I've talked to a couple of them.
Yeah. So, um, that's what I have.
Well, I guess my issue is, from my understanding of the meeting we had back in February 5th, I got, my impression was this had to do with one house.
Right.
And I'm thinking in Quincy, it was several, especially if you're telling me it was on the water.
Yeah.
Well, it was, it was. And, and so, and the way I see it is, why do we have to put anything into place? Because why don't, why don't the neighbors just complain to whoever they're registered with? With Airbnb, with VRBO?
But why can't the police enforce what they enforce in the normal neighborhood anyway? If they enclose their home?
Well, exactly. But I don't understand why we have to put an ordinance in place for what my, the, uh, my understanding is, this has to do with one residence.
Yep.
When this first came up in January, we asked the councilor to give us more information because we were trying to figure out what problem is we're trying to solve.
Right.
And I still don't know that we've been given the problem that we're trying to solve by it. Further, at our mass meeting, the building inspector said that he didn't need the ordinance to enforce these things and that he had been aware of it, that he could shut those things down with the existing ordinances that are on the books. So again, I'm not sure that there is...
So a lot regulated.
I'm not sure there's a problem to solve and until someone presents one, I, I don't know why you'd create a solution for something that isn't...
Anything I looked at didn't have a pathway to register anything or do anything anyway. But, but I'm not sure if I saw or if it...
And if we are going to do something, the fairness of having one area but not others is also problematic to it.
That's what I had to do originally.
Well, this is simply a recommendation to the city council. So how does, how does the board want to?
Can I say something?
Yes, John, of course.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just trying to do some digging into this and I also made some phone calls to check around. Um, I have a number of issues because it is only residential A and that, uh, you know, if we do something, I think we should also be include the residential B and C.
No, but the road.
If you read it, if I went through it, as I went through it, I found it. We have transitioned, uh, transitional housing, uh, that's, that's on style up on Route 13, where they take families. It might be for two or three days. It might be for a week. Okay? They, and they're, this doesn't cover for that. That doesn't allow that. What do we do with transitional housing? We've got a number of veterans housing for the short term, uh, where vets might go into a house up, up on Washington Street, Grant Street, and this doesn't cover that.
Those, those are, sorry, John.
As this is written, we run ourselves into it. There's another one, um, I can't remember the street now, Gomash, I think. And, and then there's also a transit, like a halfway house. Okay? Uh, so, and those aren't covered and those aren't issued. I think we have, we run ourselves into some other problems. And as I looked at it, I'm saying, as they try to put things together, there were no police reports. There was nothing to the DPW, nothing to the owner of the house, nothing to the building inspector. So evidently this was a one-day, I don't know, or a short-term thing that never got reported to anybody. The other thing is the building inspector, his opinion was, that we didn't need it. Okay? That really all this, this stuff comes up to the same heading as that you have requirement for a motel. Because that's exactly what a motel is. It's a short-term state.
Well, I don't agree with that because, you know, and, and I think B and B, John, I think the definitions between B and B and VRBO are somewhat different because if, I believe if VRBO is the one that's covering you and that's how you're renting your properties, there's a whole different set of conditions where they have to have, you know, fire suppression. They have to have bottled water. They have to have, you know, certain things that a B and B necessarily wouldn't have.
Right. And this, this, where I saw it, it's, it really, it didn't look like it covered what we want it to cover. It didn't cover residential B and C or BP where we allow residential. So we would have it, so, you know, we'd have an issue where, like you said, it'd be spot zoning, uh, if we have it just with...
Well, they said it wasn't, you know? So I thought the same.
Okay. So, but, you know, I just, I, my first, I think it's, I think maybe the other thing is that when we look at it, this requires the building inspector to have another whole, another person.
Yeah.
Or another whole department, within the department, you might call it, uh, registrations and...
Licenses.
Investigation of people coming in and, and finding and all the rest of that stuff. So it's not something you take lightly. And I really think that, you know, that, that always has to look at. And I think it has to be agreed to by the mayor and the budget to put in to cover that before we even propose it. Okay? Or it can't be done because if you don't have the, the people, we can do what we want, but if you don't have the department to cover it, it's, you know, it's not worth the paper written on it. So I think the way it's written needs some work. And my suggestion is that we send it back to the board, deep, to the city council without a, our recommend action saying that, that should be given to leave the withdrawal and further investigation or committee or the planning board to look up and develop a new one that covers B and B that would cover the, uh, cover all these issues. And I think it can be done. Okay? Because it's business.
Well, the other question is, do we want to do it?
And we want to do it. So, but we also want to make it so restrictive. I mean, having to, having to notify people in 300 feet of the house or whatever. Do you imagine taking somebody in, uh, in, in, over on 70th Street and notify every, every house in the 300 feet of that house? I mean, it's going to hundreds and hundreds of thousands, you know, all kinds of work.
Yeah. So then seven, so that 70 homeowners are, are telling one homeowner what they should do with their own property. That's why I don't think we should do anything at all.
Yeah.
Okay? So there's some, there's some good things in it and I think the basic idea is good. But I think the working document that we have is, you know, Quincy is the biggest city and it has a need for, like you said, they have waterfronts and they're more of a...
If it's anywhere else, they didn't reference any other place, did they?
But B and Bs are allowed all over the world. So, yeah, we should do it, but I, I don't think this is the vehicle to do it with. I think we should have a, I think it should be done and I think a recommendation back to the state council is to form a committee or have the planning board, recommend the planning board take a look at it and come up with a new ordinance. In conjunction with the building inspector.
I would move that we don't, planning board recommend that no further action is required at this time.
Yeah, but we have to. Yeah. I mean, I would too, but we'd have to, we can't just leave it that open-ended.
Why not?
It's not our baby though.
They have a major recommendation? The recommendation is we don't see any further action system? If that's the situation?
You know, if he says he can enforce it the way it stands, I don't see why we even need a regulation.
Well, I, I, see, the thing is, I agree with the building inspector in terms of that it's not needed, but I don't agree with his reasoning. Because I don't think if somebody rents out their house, that it turns into a motel.
That's right. It doesn't. It doesn't. I agree with you.
But I just think there's another avenue. I just think the avenue, if people are complaining that people are renting out the house, just like if, and I don't, just like if I were in my own home and my neighbors were complaining that I was loud every weekend, then you take action on that.
That's right.
And plus, if, if this residence is registered with Airbnb or VRBO or another type of, like, short-term licensing, then that's who you complain to.
Yep.
I don't, I don't think that anyone in the city, whether that, regardless of where they live, would be happy to, to see people coming and going every day. But, uh, why residence A? We're not, we're not a beachfront community. We're not a tourist community. There's no, you know, there's no specific part of town that's attracting people that we need to regulate this, this area.
Well, that was for the skiing, you know? It wasn't really that close. Went through the, through the watershed.
So why don't, I mean, we could, we could make the motion this, if someone wants to make this motion, that, that we, we make, I think we can incorporate John's concerns with our concerns and just simply say that we're, we, um...
The concern with the way we...
We don't make a positive, we're not making a positive recommendation for the following reasons. That it's, John's concern, it's over, if I can summarize, it's overly broad. That some members think it's overly broad. Some members think it, there's, it's not, not necessary because there's other remedies in which neighbors can act on to try to resolve the problem. And, I mean, frankly, with all due respect to the Dedham District Court, if this went there and they said, I, I don't necessarily agree with that. It's not the appeals court. It's not the SJC. I don't, I don't agree if it's one, if it's just one...
And it's also not broad.
If it's just one particular neighborhood and one specific residential section of the city, that that's...
And it's also not broad enough to limit it all the way to residence A. It should be more broad.
Right.
Okay, system.
Exactly.
And to your point about solving the problem, if there, if there are channels for complaining about noise, there are channels for complaining about traffic.
And I'm getting, I'm getting, the evidence we heard last month was it was one house. It's not like I'm hearing, and then all of a sudden we have to change the ordinance for one house. So I don't know. That's my suggestion.
I think that's correct.
So, so, so our recommendation is no recommendation?
No. Well, with those reasons.
So we're going to give them recommendations?
Well, we recommend against the...
Any action that is...
The current.
Well, what, how about we, we recommend against the current proposal?
Yes.
The current proposal to amend the ordinance?
Because we feel that it needs this, 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 and this to be more comprehensive.
For the following reasons.
Correct.
And so it was too broad and at the same time not broad enough and not covering the, the range of the city that it addressed a problem that didn't need, that there's not evidence of. And what was the other?
That I think that there's other remedies that they can exhaust.
Right. And there are existing remedies that have not been exhausted.
Elizabeth, you wrote all that, right?
I have. It's overly broad and it's not necessary because there are other remedies.
And too restrictive and the only residence A.
Yes, only residence A and only one house that we've heard about. One residence.
It's too restrictive and only res A and only one house.
Within res A.
And that existing remedies are available that have not been exhausted.
Only one house intact. There's four things.
Yeah. I think that addresses John's concerns and everybody else's.
Yeah.
You already made the...
I'll make the motion.
Not saying that we shouldn't have one, because I, I think this ordinance is just, the way it's written is not...
Yeah, in its present form, we wouldn't recommend it.
No.
In terms of this.
All right. So we have a motion by Paul with the reason, second by Jason. Um, all those in favor, roll call vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yes.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Tom Carrigan, excuse. Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Baier, excuse. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes. Um, okay, of course I lost my agenda. The next matter on it was Pierce, thank you. Um, 6.2 Pierce Street definitive subdivision, um, requesting for Mylar signatures. Review, uh, for us to review and make a decision. I, why not? I, I realized earlier I was reading the wrong email for the wrong section of the, but we have an email from our department to KP Law.
Yep.
If the city of Leominster has assigned purchase and sale agreement to purchase the property with the state grant that has already been awarded, can you confirm if, if there would be any issues with the planning board also approving signing the applicant's Mylars? Um, KP Law had no issue and I believe Wendy Lee said this is the land grant property, but also talking, so there's no issue. Can, so can we just do it?
Yeah, you have all that paperwork, um, in your file.
All right. All right. Let's sign it. We'll sign it at the end of the meeting?
Do you need a motion for that or we're just...
Yeah, you need a motion.
All right.
All right. So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second to, um...
Endorse.
Endorse the Mylar signatures at the end of the meeting. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yeah.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Tom Carrigan, excuse. Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Baier, excuse. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes. Okay, 7.0 Director's Report. Um, District Local Technical Assistance Program Updates Proposal to Request MRPC to Review Zoning and to Look for Avenues to Increase Housing Options.
Okay, yeah, we have an opportunity to get some funding to take a look at our zoning, to see what we can do to our zoning, to amend it, to look for more housing options. Um, this funding, we don't have to match it and, um, we do need a vote from the board to approve it.
So it's going to look at every zone?
It's going to look at the whole zoning ordinance to look at what we can do to increase housing options. Um, and then after the planning, if the planning board will move to approve this, then the mayor has to write a letter endorsing it and then it's due May 6th. So quick turnaround time.
That's the way to do it.
We just found out about this. This was the next agenda that was available to put this on, so.
Free money.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Yep.
Motion to what?
You don't need a motion.
Motion to apply for D L T A grant.
Motion to apply for D L T A.
Why don't we just make it a motion to authorize Elizabeth to apply for it?
Yep.
So moved.
Yeah, that's what I, I think.
All right. Motion made in second. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi.
Yeah.
John Souza.
Yeah.
Tom Carrigan, excuse. Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Baier, excuse. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes. Um, 7.1.2 CPTC Annual Conference Continuing Education at the College of the Holy Cross, not Holy Cross University in Worcester on 3/16/24. not Holy Cross University, in Worcester on 3/16/24.
Yes, I've been to this, this will be my sixth year going, and every year I learn something new. And, um, we have it in our budget to send board members, if someone can go, or all of you can go. It's a Saturday, it's coming up. So if you want to go, please tell me so that I can get you the funding to go.
What's the Saturday?
March 16th, it's from 8 to 4.
Steph, you're going to go back. Can you go?
I'm not going. I'm going. And that's, and that's all I had for my director's report.
All right, um, before we adjourn, um, I just want to state, I, I, the planning department had an, um, an incident last week. Apparently a, a particular applicant was upset, um, about, um, the timing.
Carol?
Yes, John, do you want to... Yes.
I was just thinking, maybe we should handle this in the executive session.
I don't think we can do that, John.
Doesn't fall under the criteria.
Well, all I'm going to say is that the planning board does a very good job. The planning director, Elizabeth Wood and Stephanie Witten do a good job in reviewing everything in advance. If things are not done, um, if things are not done, if the application is not completed, they let them know, they let the applicant know instead of accepting it and then leaving it for us to say this isn't completed, and now all of a sudden time constraints and, and, um, time constraints become more of an issue. So I'm just letting the public know that if you get something back from the planning department, it's just to make sure that we have all the information so that there's no further delay at that time. And I think we've rarely had any, any issue in the past. But, um, if any application is out there for any particular developer that needs to be taken, that needs to be submitted, the planning department is here, will submit it, and we will, uh, schedule things as expeditiously as possible as long as, um, the application is completed and all plans and other, um, supporting documentation that's required is, is submitted, um, on a timely fashion and, and complete. I don't think we've ever really received, at least in the five to six years that Elizabeth has been here, that there's been an issue.
It hasn't.
I, I talked to the individual.
Okay, and I'm sure you assuaged his concerns, John.
Yes.
There's another one.
You calmed him down.
Thank you. Yeah, but you know, the other thing too is, this is a business office. There's no need to act the way the person acted either. And I will say that, you know, without being in the executive session. That kind of behavior...
You just, you don't go into, you can't go into...
I know, but that kind of behavior is just, you know, not conducive to creating a good environment or one where we want to help you. So knock it off.
Yeah, and also understanding that he may have, this, that applicants may have to answer to somebody else. And so the pressure could have come somewhere from, from another individual as well on, on the applicant and the, and the developer. So we're, we're empathetic to, on that end as well, so. But, um, I, I, Elizabeth, in the last five, it's almost been, has it been more than five years?
Five and a half.
I mean, she's been in over a place with it. No, I can't. So it's, so anyway, that's the reason that we're saying this is that the planning department is here for anyone who wants to apply for anything where the planning department has jurisdiction over, and Elizabeth and Stephanie, um, will certainly guide the applicant through the process.
That's it?
Got to sign a mylar.
All right, executive session, nine.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, roll call vote.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser. Sal Chaconi.
Yay.
John Sizem.
Yes.
Tom Cargan, excused. Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Boyer, excuse. Carver Torrioso.
Yes.